Nine sponsors come in to sponsor $250 scholarships for our K through 12 Heartland Consolidated Schools.
Good evening. I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fulton, here. Judge Chofu, here. Treasurer Hornet?
Here.
Trustee Germaine?
He's here.
Here. trustee McMillan?
Here.
Trustee O'Connell?
Attending remotely from Georgia. Thank you.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
All present. Thank you. Item number four is approval of the agenda, and we have an addition this evening. Do you need a motion or first or before that? I'd just like to add a item to the pending and new business, item C, the SRS consent judgment revision.
I'll move to approve the agenda as revised.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Hornet, second by trustee Germaine. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Call to the public? Wait, call to the public? Not this evening? Item number six is approval of our consent agenda.
I'll move.
Support.
Motion by trustee Petrucci, second by trustee Germaine. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven is pending and new business. We have three items this evening. The first one is the 2024 wastewater treatment plant annual sampling and reporting.
Thank you Supervisor Fulton. I apologize, I clicked on the wrong one here. But what you have in front of you this evening is with the last three years, we've had a contract with Wood Environmental, who was bought out or absorbed by a company called WSP. So it's still the same core group of people we've been working with for the last, oh gosh, 10 years or more for this. The sampling takes place back here in Settlers Park with the salt plume basically that is making its way through there. Every year, we have to do sampling. We have monitoring wells out there that we pull samples out of groundwater at different depths and different aquifers. So there's two different aquifers, a shallower aquifer and a deep aquifer, to monitor salt levels out there in the groundwater as the houses that are connected to that property are on wells. So this is an Eagle mandate that we have to do every year. We send out letters to all of these different residents that live along there and collect samples from those houses every year. This is generally, when we do this, it's a three-year contract. It just happens to run up in September, so it's kind of a mid fiscal year for us. The difference right now for this is about $1,411 per year. So the increased cost went from, what are we at? Just $46,233 for the three-year cost for the task one, which is the monitoring. Then the monitoring plan itself is an additional $5,000 a year for the three years totaling $15,000. This, it does add a little bit to our, what we have budgeted for it. And the funds can be covered out of our contingency line item at this point. We have about $19,000 a year and it's just over, just over $20,000 per year with this new contract. So obviously, we've seen costs go up in everything. This is a very minimal increase for this contract. Be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Matt, were you part of the original company that was doing the monitoring on that site? But you knew the people that were doing it, correct? And if I recall, this plume, nobody really knows where it came from. However, there was salt stored at the old Oasis site. And when they, that's when they started to check the monitoring of that, those wells, correct? Around that time?
That's not what I recall.
No.
No? Okay.
Do you want me to tell you what I recall?
Yes, please.
The, when the sewer was first put in, a lot of the houses, they had the grinder pumps, had all their water softeners connected to the sewer system.
Correct.
So the lagoons, they received the wastewater after it went through the treatment plant, were getting dumped a lot of saltwater. And they were what's called a rapid-receiving basin, meaning that they had a sand bottom. The water flowed in and it was intended to rapidly dissipate back to the groundwater. And so it just created a plume of saltwater that started flowing with the groundwater direction back toward Or Creek.
And that was, I'm doing a little history here, just so I can refresh my memory. That had something to do with the finding a new way to dispose of the surface discharge?
Yes.
And that was the action that caused that?
They wouldn't let us.
They wouldn't let us discharge directly to the surface water.
Because of that plume?
Well, no, that was a different issue. That was because the wastewater treatment plant that was originally built could not achieve the phosphorus removal requirements that are required for surface water discharges.
Okay.
And that's why we ended up scrapping the old plant.
But you were right, and they first thought it was the Oasis. Their first reaction was the Oasis, but that's what it turned out to be. So you were kind of...
And just so you know, Heartland was not unique in this situation.
Correct.
Brighton had the same situation. Anyone that had a small treatment plant that had a rapid discharge basin had the same issues.
Thank you for that update.
So a lot of them were associated with trailer parks and even huge, you know, multi-million dollar subdivisions that were beyond the limits of the Brighton, city of Brighton sewer system. So they put in a private system, which we try to avoid here whenever we can.
Just bringing that up because it's important for folks to understand what these...
This is a legacy cost associated with operation of the wastewater treatment plant.
And then the other question that I do have, and the last one I have is there, again, a lot of time has passed since we started doing this. Some of those wells have shown a clear, whatever they do, sampling? And haven't some of those actually been eliminated from the testing site?
That is true.
Yep. Yeah, we have eliminated certain wells that, I'll say on the southwest corner of the property that are working your way to the, to the north, or southeast, I'm sorry, working your way to the northwest. So the wells that we have currently back this way have been eliminated. We're still testing and monitoring a few to the northwest. Yes.
I guess my last, my last question would be, there is no threat or anything in this sampling?
Absolutely not.
It's, there's a name for it, but it's, there's no toxicity or anything? It's a sodium level, correct?
Absolutely not. Yes, it's a sodium level. It's testing for a sodium level. It's just, it's a mandate that we have from Eagle to test. And there's absolutely no, as trustee Germaine said, it's, it can be a backwash from a water softener system. I mean, there's many different things, but it's nothing that's toxic in any way. Absolutely not.
Thank you for your updates. Any other questions on this? Having none, I'll entertain a motion. I'll move to approve the change order number 17 with WSP for a three-year groundwater monitoring extension for a total of $61,233 as presented.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Shofu, second by trustee Petrucci. Any questions, comments? Being none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number B is Heartland Veterans Memorial quote. We have a committee. Joe Petrucci, I believe, is the chair of that committee. I'm going to turn this over to you, Joe.
Well, we had a meeting last week, and the members of the committee approved three quotes for the monument that we'd like the board to decide on. One of them, we decided, I think we decided that instead of taking a quote off the internet, that we would formulate our own quote to make the monument unique to Heartland. So that's what we did with these three quotes. We also positioned the Armed Forces on the monument. We still need to talk about the last open one. But what I'll do now is I'm going to turn it over to Mike because he has information that with regards to the quotes and construction of it.
Thank you, Joe. So trustees, what you have in front of you is a mock-up of the memorial itself. I don't think we've had a rendering with the addition of the two stones on each side of it at this point. And I want to preface something, that the image that's on there is not the actual image that we have kind of all settled on at this point. When they, when the monument company takes all of this and they rearrange everything and they try to redo it, they have to recad that, that actual drawing. So it's not, it's not a great depiction of the actual picture right now. What we wanted to do more and to get more out of this discussion is the way that the Armed Forces logos are positioned on this, as you have three to the left and the right of the main stone, and then the one Space Force one to the far left, along with the one blank. There was discussion of that being added for service animals on that stone itself. That's obviously a discussion that we can continue with and decide which way we want to go with it. The two stones, the smaller stones on the outside are small enough that they're able to be engraved here. I'll say within the United States. The other three are not. The other three are very large, very heavy stones that are engraved at the quarry where they come from. So really, we have to settle on the six divisions of the military that are depicted here, along with, our goal in this was to get the sayings onto the actual marker so you could see what it would look like. Now, I will say, this is rough, put in here from the monument company. There's some punctuation and some things that need to be adjusted in this. We needed to get it on there to be able to show it to you this evening, to kind of give you an overview of what it would look like and how much room it would take up. So there are some things that need to be cleaned up on it. But I think all of you that sent me verbiage that you would like to see on this, the committee went through and we deliberated for quite some time on this as to what, you know, what we, the three sayings that we're kind of narrowing this down to. And the three sayings are depicted on the stones in the pictures you have in front of you. So what we need to do is decide on one, as I said, punctuation, and there's some things that need to be cleaned up in it a little bit. But the premise or the actual saying of itself is what we're looking for, so.
Yeah, and the last one, "In honor of our veterans, for our courage, strength, and dedication," period. And then the last one says, "Keeping us safe." I mean, that doesn't sound like a sentence.
So that's, I mean, this is the discussion I want to have here of, would it be to, you know, for keeping us safe, to keeping us safe?
That's what I thought, for keeping us safe at least. Then it would be a comma.
Right. So...
It just didn't sound like a sentence, keeping us safe.
Right. So again, like I said, these are, what it was narrowed down to, and trustee Petrucci did, he was correct, that the committee's decision was to kind of take a couple of different sayings, mesh them together to make our own unique and original saying. So these were the three that were kind of, that were picked out of, now, there was quite a few. So it was narrowed down to these three. But as we sit here this evening, I'd like to get a determination of what we want it to say. How would the committee like to go forward?
Well, we need to make a decision because we have to get back to them like ASAP on this thing. So I think that the best way to do it is have a discussion, or we can have a silent vote on it if you want. And either way, but it should be a board decision. And I'll just start out by saying I favor the second one. I believe that Denise already voted, but I don't know what she voted on. Denise, you there?
That was someone we had to change a little bit to express what the committee really wanted in the statement.
I'm partial to the second one also. I will defer to the committee. Which one they, which one I would like?
I'm also open to, if, I'm just, if we're looking at the second one, if there's a suggestion for an addition or anything, and that we're, I'm open to that right now.
All I'm, we got to just make sure that whatever we use is proper and acceptable with everything, because we don't want to make a mistake.
We did have, after the post went out on social media and on our website about the Veterans Memorial and what we plan to do moving forward, we did have someone from the Livingston County Veterans Affairs that reached out to us this weekend. So we've kind of started a conversation with them, where I think it'd be good to start having the conversations of what is on this, making sure that it's proper, so.
Summer?
What was the question again?
Which one would you like?
Which, which direction would you like the committee to go?
I like one or two, but I know the punctuation has to be changed.
Okay. Matthew?
I like one and two also. I think one is a little simpler and gets right to the point that it's a veterans memorial. But the second one is, I can live with that too.
Kathy, you?
Yeah, I was kind of partial to number one. My son's combat veteran. He liked number one. Number two's okay, but to me, it sounds a little, I know it's a great thought, but our flag does not fly because it starts off negative connotation to me before I finish it, where like Matt said, number one is right to the point and very clear that it's for our veterans. So that was the only difference, but either one.
Denise, I didn't really fully hear what your thoughts were on this.
Well, it was during our meeting, the saying here was a little bit different. And a lot of the committee liked the saying, but we want, we added, hold on, I've got to get to it so I can read it myself here. We added their courage, strength, and dedication as well, the committee added to the saying.
So that would be the one that you prefer?
Aye.
Okay. Does the committee need more information than that? I think we went through everybody, didn't we?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So we have, at this point right now, we have three...
Three, three, and a blank here.
Yeah, three, four, five. That would, would go with number two. And one, two, three, that are kind of split, you know, we do one and two. So I think majority rules on this at this point of number two. So as long as we're all okay with that.
So at this point in the process, the committee would go back and refine that and get some type of a...
Yep. We will actually have the, put together with the correct punctuation and everything to it and get it to the monument company, because it's got to be sent to them in the next few weeks or so to get this, get it, get it rolling. So...
I'd like to suggest that you take out the word "there," because if you read it, it flies with the breath of our veterans' courage, strength, and dedication. It sounds better than the word "there."
Mike? With what, instead of the, you said negative?
Yeah.
I was just jotting down a note, possibly saying, "Our flag flies with the breath of our veterans, their courage, strength, and dedication," not because the wind moves it. So something...
It starts out positive and...
Right.
My seconded.
We don't need a formal motion or anything? This is for discussions for the committee?
Discussion, but I need a, I need a decisive, which way everybody wants to go.
Well, I don't, I still don't, I still think the committee should be able to take that and then draft it into a form that, after hearing the comments?
Two weeks, though. No, we just got to go in.
Right.
No, I understand that, but I don't think, I just personally, I think this thing needs to be, you have the direction from the board. Now you get your committee back together, take everybody's comments, and then bring it to somebody who can give it its blessing or whatever you want to say, okay or approval.
Joe, do you see that I'm talking about the word "there"? If you took out the word...
I think if we remove the word "there," I think it does sound a little...
It's nicer and clearer.
Okay. Okay. Think we have enough direction?
Yep.
Good?
Just remove the word "there."
Okay.
Okay. Are we good?
Also, I don't know if people vote or not, but I'm also telling the thousands that are listening to this right now that they can go on our Heartland website, and there's a little, something about the memorial, but that is not going to be the final one. That's just, we're going to be working on some type of a video or something to put on. But with that little notification that we did on the internet, we've already gotten many, many calls. People that own businesses and so forth that want to contribute to the memorial, so...
Yeah, because when we decide to do that, I need to open a fund, so...
Yep.
Well, yeah, so when we get the video done, it'll give them a specific direction on how to make a donation or buy a brick.
Yeah.
And then at that point, we have to have a place to put it.
Well, I can get that open. If we're definitely going to do that, I'll get an account open.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can discuss that tomorrow, because we, we're going to have to open up something at some point for it.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Yep.
Did we get a quote yet on landscaping?
We got electrical quote for the panels behind and landscaping. It's supposed to reach out to me the end of the holiday, end of last week. I haven't heard back from them.
What was the electrical quote?
There was, it was right around 3K for the panel, all the, you know, the, what is it, Unistrut? With 100 amp panel, some outlets, you know, if we ever have, we can talk to a speaker system or like, you know, a sort of a ceremony, they'll have the ability of that. And then there was additional cost of five or 6,000.
Just over 6,000.
To bore the underground line from that panel.
The total is what?
It's under 10 grand.
Just under 10,000.
Yeah.
That's, that's boring it to a pole with a transformer on it at this point.
So hopefully that landscape comes...
So the landscape is the only one we're waiting for as far as the biggies?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. That's correct.
So it sounds like, yeah, we can possibly add a few things. Okay. Any questions?
Nope. You guys are good?
Oh, the date, the date. We discussed the date. This is going to be a big thing for Heartland. It's going to be a big thing in Michigan. With all the confusion and stuff we see on the news right now of all the burning flags and all that, people are hungry for something like this. So it's going to be a big deal. So we wanted to kind of pinpoint a date so we can start inviting people. And we decided that the best thing to do, the safest thing to do, was to move it from Memorial Day until September the 6th. So September 6th, the next year, is our target for a dedication ribbon cutting for the memorial.
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday. If, and of course, if it rains or something like that, we can always move it to Sunday. But we thought that would be the safest thing to do, because I want to get the schools involved with this. I'm having a meeting with the superintendent of schools. I want to get the band there, the marching band. I want to get the choir. I want to get, I want this to be a big deal for Heartland. And during the summer, they're not together. So if we go from May, Memorial Day, basically, we have to wait until September in order to do it. So it worked out better. It's the safest thing to do. Gives us plenty of time to get this thing done with the landscaping and everything else. Got to go into it. So it's going to take a little bit longer than what we thought, but it's just a better way of doing it. Good things don't happen easy.
Or fast.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
Yeah, that's it.
That's it? Any other comments on this? Being none, we'll move on to item number 7C, which is a revision to the Septages Receiving Station consent judgment.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Fulton. So as discussed two meetings ago now, we have, in front of you here on your monitors and up on the wall here, the consent judgment that we had approved a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago or so, that was sent back to Livingston County, and then was sent back to us with these revisions in it. I would like to preface that the original document that we received was their document that they sent us. So these are revisions on their own document. So as you can see in front of you, subsection A here, they removed Septages Receiving Station and SRS and just put SRS. Kind of semantics, it's not anything that's detrimental here. Subsection B, the red portion here is what was added. "If there are any conditions beyond the county's control that require an extension, including but not limited to those related to the sale of bonds sufficient to meet this obligation, then a reasonable extension of time shall be granted to accommodate those conditions."
See, you corrected it in your mind. The word "to" is not in there.
I know. It, I can't read it that way.
But it's wrong. And if we correct it, it's got to go back to the, you know what I mean, so...
Agreed. So this, I wanted to give an explanation on this for everyone as we sit here. The original way that this read was, "If there are conditions beyond the county's control that require an extension, then a reasonable extension of time shall be granted to accommodate those conditions." The county, be it the Board of Public Works and/or the commissioners, added, "including but not limited to those related to the sale of bonds sufficient to meet this obligation." As, talking with legal counsel on this, that, all that is, is giving an example of a reason that's beyond the county's control. Should they have to sell the bonds for that? control. Should they have to sell the bonds for that? They not, the bonds not sell? Okay. It's a, that's something beyond the county's control. How long they take to, to go through that process, that is something that's in their control. So this does not harm the township in any way in this, in this portion of the, um, consent judgment. So on C, referred to in paragraph B above, again, they're just stating that, um, it's the RRE used, used within the system and with the payment totaling 3.616 million dollars as stated in sub-paragraph B. Um, E is the revision was average daily metered gallons per calendar month because they wanted to define calendar as opposed to month. So to say that it's a calendar month, not just a generic month. Um, the next portion was, then the SRS must restrict its flows in excess of the county's purchased RREs instead of its purchased RREs. Um, the last portion was, um, J, the county through its DPW shall develop a sewer fund balance. So again, semantics really. Um, what we're looking this evening or seeking this evening is a motion to approve this as, as revised and move this thing forward. So, uh, again, I would like a roll call vote on this as we go through, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent judgment as revised by Livingston County and authorize the township attorney to act on behalf of the township in this matter.
Support.
Motion by? A motion by Treasure Horning, second by Trustee McMullen. Any other comments? Questions?
I have a question. Did the county already approve the original document?
With these revisions?
So, so that it's actually going to two different committees on Monday, September ninth, um, with these revisions in it. The Livingston County Board of Public Works, yes, approved that original document. Um, the Board of Commissioners has not, nor their infrastructure finance committee, which is where it's going on Monday. So, um, again, it will go through those channels next week as we've really already approved this document, but with the changes that were made to it, I would like to get that reapproved here at this level to make sure that there's no confusion on it.
So if I understood you correctly, the entire Board of Commissioners have not
They have not voted
approved this or denied it yet.
Correct.
It's still in the committee stage.
Correct.
Okay, and then my second question is, our motion is to authorize the township attorney to continue to negotiate on our behalf?
No, the
With our blood.
The motion is to accept these revisions.
And then let Mike present it.
And then, and then Mike's going to present it back to them.
Yep.
There's no more
You can't add the word "two" in there?
Yeah, they may, I, but my guess is when they redline it and do it in black, they're going to
When this document is cleaned up, I would, yes, that will be added to it. I would, I mean, in legal terms, it would make sense to me.
Yeah.
Um, where, where, as, you know, as I said, I'm looking this evening for the board's blessing on this, but yes, then it will be redone again without the redline version and then sent to the county commissioners for approval.
I mean, we could say in our minutes, Larry, that we recognize the word "two" was missing in paragraph B and then, and still approve it the way it is, so it goes through.
Mm-hmm.
But we have noted it. If they correct it, we, we already know about it.
Yep.
I just hate to hold it up by us saying, add that, and then it has to go back and forth and back and forth again.
But we don't want to volley it back and forth.
Right.
That's the reason why I asked if the county commissioners have even seen this yet, because they may look at it and
It is my understanding they have seen it. They have not, they've talked about it a few different times, but it, but they have not voted on approval of it yet.
Any other questions? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee O'Connell?
Can't vote.
Uh, trustee McMullen?
Yes.
Trustee Petrusi?
Yes.
Supervisor Fulton?
Yes.
Treasure Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Clerk Shoufu, yes.
Thank you. Item number eight is board reports. We start this evening with trustee McMullen.
No report.
Trustee Petrusi?
No report.
Clerk Shoufu?
Absentee voter ballot applications will be going out tomorrow for the November election. Um, we have approved the ballots and sent the information back to the county. Uh, they should be getting ballots printed, uh, in the next couple of weeks. Ballots will go out when, uh, we, after we receive them and test them, so.
And then, uh, the, the process is the same as the last election. You'll be able to vote here for
That's correct. Early voting will start nine days before the elec, or, we'll start the Saturday, the second Saturday before the election through the Sunday before the election, those nine days.
And that's right here at the township hall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Treasure Horning?
Um, the farmer's market started a new thing this year and it's really taking off. And they're offering a free booths to kids to get them involved in, when we have opening spaces. And we've had a, a little girl, Baker, who's come and sold out every week, and she's thrilled jumping up and down. Now she's passed it on to her friends and told them about it. And we've got all kinds of candle makers and little, it's great to see these kids getting involved and how the public's supporting them. And then also the seniors had a recognition dinner for volunteers. And these aren't people that volunteer for a one-time thing. These are consistent volunteers over there. We have over a hundred people that volunteer over there to make that program work. And, uh, it's, it's kind of unique, I think, in the state for, just great to see all the activity.
Thank you. Trustee Jermaine?
No report.
Trustee O'Connell?
No report.
Uh, and I have nothing this evening. So we'll take a brief recess. We'll go into our information and discussion. And the only thing we're going to talk about this evening is the manager's report. So we'll take a brief recess and continue on.
See, that's my clue to leave, right?
You can stay at some public meeting.
No, no.